This is the Board of Trustees' regular meeting. Today's date is July 12, 2022. It is 7:30 PM. This is meeting number 2022-13, and we are in the Village Hall Auditorium. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Boarder.
Present.
Trustee Desmond.
Here.
Trustee Sack.
Present.
Trustee Pembroke.
Here.
Trustee Mallow.
Here.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Here.
Trustee Stalker.
Here.
Do we? Do we have a motion to allow trustee from the 6th District?
Motion.
Dissipate?
So moved.
First District.
First District, so moved.
So moved.
From the first district. Correct, thank you.
Motion by Ralph.
Trustee Desmond. Did we get a first and second, Madam Clerk?
Did.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Can you hear us, Tim?
I can hear you.
Okay, good, good. We'll move it on to number three. This is an honorable thing to do here. We're going to do a presentation of the-
Pledge allegiance.
Oh, almighty. Pledge allegiance, please rise me for the pledge of allegiance. Military police salute first responders. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to number three, which is a presentation of life-saving awards. Chief, would you like to handle this? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I have two life-saving awards to give out to Sergeant Heilig and Officer Atkinson. On May 10, 2022, at 6 o'clock in the evening, Sergeant Heilig and Officer Atkinson were in the area of 107th and- when they heard gunshots. Sergeant Heilig broadcast the information to dispatch, and he and Officer Atkinson began checking the area. Sergeant Heilig immediately located a vehicle stopped on 107th Street with a male victim staggering to the vehicle and covered in blood, with injuries that appeared to be consistent with gunshot wounds. Sergeant Heilig and Officer Atkinson immediately assessed the situation and began to provide medical assistance to the victim. Sergeant Heilig applied pressure to the gunshot wound on the victim's right armpit-chest area while Officer Atkinson applied a tourniquet to the gunshot wound. Sergeant Heilig and Officer Atkinson continued to administer medical care until relieved by the Oaklawn paramedics. The victim lost a large amount of blood, but due to the quick response and medical aid provided to the victim by Sergeant Heilig and Officer Atkinson, hospital staff indicated that they most likely saved his life. Sergeant Heilig and Officer Atkinson relied on their training and experience and showed great composure in a highly stressed-
I can't hear you.
Sergeant Heilig and Officer Atkinson are a credit to the Oaklawn Police Department and most deserving of the Oaklawn Police Department Life Saving Award.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. We were always proud of our police and our fire departments' work. It is certainly the most important functions of this village is to provide safety for the community, and you guys do a very, very good job at it. Any comments from the board?
Just another fine example of what our police and our public safety people do day in, day out. We back you 110% and thank you for the job that you do every day. You get to see the good and the bad, and obviously you were able to make a bad situation into a good, so thank you for what you guys do every day, and ladies.
Thank you, trustee.
We hear about this time after time, because we're on the board, that the police or fire department does a great job in Oaklawn. I hope the residents of the Village of Oaklawn listen to this and appreciate the fact that we do have the greatest police and fire departments on the southwest side. I don't know about the rest of the world, but I'm very proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Thank you, guys. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to public comments. Madam Clerk, any public comments?
There are none.
Mayor, can I interject here? I know that you have a proclamation. A large group of people here for that proclamation. Can we move up 13?
Is there a motion? Is that a motion?
Make a motion. Move up 13. Second, please.
All a favor?
Hi.
Okay. All right. A proclamation of the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois-
Do a roll call.
Oh, we do? They have to do a roll call on this? Okay, please.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. A proclamation of the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois, honoring Patrick Dunn on his 40th anniversary with Edward Jones Financial Services. Patrick, are you here? Good. Whereas Section 6A of Article 7 of the 1970 Constitution of the State of Illinois provides that any municipality which has a population of more than 25,000 is a home-rule unit, and the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois, the village, with a population in excess of 25,000, is therefore a home-rule unit, and pursuant to the provisions of said Section 6A of Article 7, may exercise any power and perform any function pertaining to its government and affairs, including, but not limited to, the power to issue a village proclamation. Whereas the Village of Oaklawn is proud to celebrate Patrick Dunn on the occasion of his 40th anniversary with Edward Jones, whereas Patrick Dunn established an office in Oaklawn serving hundreds in our community, and whereas Patrick Dunn has helped clients during challenges of economic downturn, a great recession, and a global pandemic, and whereas Patrick Dunn has built a solid reputation for 40 years, meeting the ever-changing landscape of technology regulation and evolving client needs, and whereas Patrick Dunn continually gives back to his colleagues by providing mentorship along with a great sense of humor, and whereas Patrick Dunn does this with the help of his team, Jill McGinthy and Carol Hanson, who bring their dedication and commitment to client excellence, and whereas Patrick Dunn has accomplished this 40-year track record of success with the love and support of his wife Nancy, and whereas Patrick Dunn will continue to serve his clients, colleagues, and Oaklawn community. Now therefore, I, Terry Vorder, Village President of the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois, hereby honor the 40th anniversary of Patrick Dunn with Edward Jones Financial Services and proclaim Tuesday, July 12, 2022, as the Patrick Dunn Day within the village, and further encourage all citizens of Oaklawn to congratulate Patrick Dunn on the occasion of his 40th anniversary. I proclaim this on the 12th day of July 2022. Patrick, would you like to step up to the podium? Patrick, we're going to give you a nice, beautiful copy of this, but this is general one. We'll give it to you for now. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Well, Village has been a great place to work. Started a long time ago. Different mayors. Seen everybody's been good. Police, fire. Always felt safe and able to do what I needed to get done. The building department was always constructive in building out my offices and different things, and become a property owner in the village as well. So my office down on the far side, and by the way, you're doing a great job cleaning up 95th Street down there at the far west end. All that work on the side, north side of the road, much improved. I really appreciate that. Been a great place to grow my business and take care of my family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry, I'd like to say something real quick, just in regards to Mr. Dunn. He's helped my family, Carol. I really appreciate it. Two of my boys that graduated would probably not graduate without the help of Patrick and Carol and their group over there. So congratulations.
Now we get into the meat of the village business. Want to sit around? You're welcome. You want to leave and celebrate this proclamation? You're free to go.
We have an appointment at Fox's.
All right. Hey! You're welcome. You're welcome.
True financial advisor.
All right, conflict of interest disclosure. Any trustee have a conflict with anything on his agenda?
Public comments, first, Mayor.
Oh, yeah. And public comments. I already did comments.
Oh, did we already have?
I already did those. Okay. Hearing no conflicts, we'll move on to approval of the closed meeting minutes of 2022-09 dated June 7, 2021. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion approved. Approval of the regular meeting minutes 2022-11 dated June 7, 2022. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. And number eight, approval of the special meeting minutes dated- special minute 2022-12 dated June 23, 2022.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
New business by village trustee. Trustee Desmond, do you have any new business?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, I know we will probably be talking about it later on the agenda, but I'd like to commend again trustee Sack and trustee Mallow for helping our local businesses with this license fee amnesty. Both, we, you know, we also need to look at what we can do for our residents and homeowners. And I think that the best thing we can do right now, and especially with a possible recession on the horizon, is to make sure that we do not have a property tax increase this year. And I would ask our village manager and village staff that when they start preparing our budget later this year, that they put efforts in place right now to ensure a zero increase in property taxes. I think that will help residents and businesses alike. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Oluniechak?
Yeah, I do want to congratulate trustee Sack and trustee Mallow on thinking forward and supporting the businesses, though I think that that's a great statement, especially what we've been able to come out of and what we're looking like we're going to go into. I just wanted to update our residents about our meeting. Earlier today, we met with Nycor to discuss concerns about the projects that they're doing with the meter replacement. I think it was a good discussion. I will tell you that the trustees that were involved in the meeting were very pointed to Nycor about our concern about the landscaping and construction follow-through of Nycor. They have assured us that they understand what we're saying and that they will be putting more attention into getting the projects completed timely. I know right now, they did mention that landscaping is an issue due to the types of weather that we're going into, so I said that would be understood, but if there could be some kind of communication going out to the residents, letting them know that the sod is on the way, it's probably better off if we wait till August, September, but just so the residents have communication going through. And then they have given each one of the trustees a contact number, so if residents are having issues with Nycor and the meter replacement, please make sure you contact your trustees so that they can help. As I think the Nycor trustee Stalker lady said, she said that she is here to guide us through the- it wasn't bureaucracy.
Don't try to.
Yeah, she told us, don't try to have you navigate through it or let me navigate through it. So anyone that's had a deal with it, I'm sure they understand, but I think overall is a good meeting, and I'm happy with their commitment to bringing resolution to residents' issues. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Mallow?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank our staff, especially Deadezian, as far as putting together our Fourth of July parade. I want to thank all the volunteers that were out there helping us, obviously in this time, you know, with what happened in Highland Park. It always makes you feel safe that our police are there, our fire's there, everybody's there to kind of make this thing work, and it's just tremendous that this world is the way it is right now. But I do want to thank our volunteers and all the trustees that were there to be able to support this town and everybody that showed up to see what we put on, and I think it was a great day. The concert was excellent. I think everybody had a good time. There was plenty of things for the kids to do, so it worked out very, very well. So I just wanted to do that, and I just wanted to update everybody on the concerts. Since our next meeting is until August, we're going to have three concerts on the green here. Sunday, July 17 is our first one. Comes along with some base painters that are going to be there. The Dancing Noodles will be playing at 7:00 PM. Sunday, July 31 is our first teen showcase. We'll have six different teen showcases from local high schools that will be performing that evening, so that should be a good time. We should have plenty of different talent coming out for that, so please join us for that. And then the last one before our next meeting will be Sunday, August 7, and that's Take Cover, which is a local band from Oaklawn. So if you can make it out there, 7 o'clock, 5, you know, people start lining up at 5 o'clock, they get ready and listen to these bands into the evening. So I'd like to thank Public Works for what they did over there. It looks tremendous. The new lighting just brings it all together, makes it look really, really nice. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. If I can just capitalize on the parade. Certainly, that parade had to have the best attendance that I think we've ever had in the years that I participated in the parade, and we have to thank our staff. I mean, we can sit up here and take all the credit as the elected officials, but it's the staff that puts it together, and they did a wonderful job this year. And I also want to compliment our reporters out here, who did a wonderful job in covering it, okay, and getting the message out for next year, so that more people will come. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Trustee Pembroke?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to echo your sentiments and trustee Mallow's sentiments about the great Fourth of July parade, and thank the municipal workers for all their efforts and the Public Works and their first responders. It was a great day, and the Arts and Event Committee that put together the concert on the green was great, so just want to thank everybody for their efforts.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee. Trustee Stalker?
I just want to echo the fact that I agree with what's been said. I really appreciate what the Special Events Committee has done, police and fire. It's a great development, Uncle. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Sack?
Just same thing as everybody else, but we got to give Mr. Mallow over there, trustee Mallow, some credit too for putting together all these bands on the green and organizing that on the Fourth, as well as, you know, everybody forgets, we're all out there enjoying ourselves, and we had all the staff out there working on it, but it's a normal holiday for us. Just agree with what everybody said. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee. Village managers report. Nothing this evening, Mayor. Okay, we move on to the consent agenda, and it's a lengthy one, so bear with me, please. All items under consent are generally routine and brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees, village manager, and village committees, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, request Board of Trustees' approval of the Zoning and Planning Commission recommendation for a special use permit to allow three residential dwelling units on the second floor in a general commercial C-2 zoning district at 5419-29 West 95th Street, and B is ordinance 221338 allowing that construction. C, request Board of Trustees' approval of a zoning and planning commission recommendation for a variation of the village code requiring the exterior walls of a residential home to be 50% masonry at 4553 West 107th Street, and D is ordinance 2213-39 allowing that variation. E is request Board of Trustees' approval of the Zoning and Planning Commission recommendation for a special use permit to allow for an athletic training facility in a multifamily R3-zone district at 4520 Rumsey Avenue, and F is ordinance 221340 allowing that change. G, request Board of Trustees' approval of the Zoning and Planning Commission's recommendation for a special use permit to allow for the storage of towed vehicles in a multifamily R3-zone district at 4553 Ramsey, and H is ordinance 221341 allowing that change. I is request the Board of Trustees' approval of a zoning and planning commission recommendation for an honorary street sign for the Tom Gallantino Way at 108th Street from Cicero Avenue to La Crosse, and J is ordinance 221342 allowing that street sign. K, request Board of Trustees' approval of a Traffic Safety Committee's recommendation for a four-way stop sign to replace the existing two-way stop sign at 102nd Street and Keeler Avenue, and L is ordinance 221343 allowing that stop sign. M, request Board of Trustees' approval of the Safety Traffic Committee's recommendation for a four-way stop sign to replace the existing two-way stop sign at 97th Street and Costner Avenue, and N is ordinance 221344 allowing that stop sign. O, ordinance 221345, an ordinance amending certain sections of Title 10, Chapter 5, entitled misdemeanor offenses. P, ordinance 221346, an ordinance granting amnesty of business license fees for the year 2022 in the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois. Q, Resolution 221338, a resolution waiving the competitive bidding requirements and awarding a service agreement with Flack Group Incorporated for 42 license plate readers to be placed around the Village of Oaklawn for the Oaklawn Police Department. And R, Resolution 221339, a resolution approving payment of the DEA Chicago Strike Force renewal of surveillance equipment with Calo through the equitable sharing fund. S, Resolution 221340, a resolution awarding Institform Technologies USA LLC the bid for the 2022 sanitary sewer inspection and rehabilitation program. And T, Resolution 221341, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of an engagement letter for services for enterprise resource planning software implementation. U, Resolution 221342, a resolution imposing penalties on the business license and license of midnight towing and recovery in the Village of Oaklawn, County of Cook, Illinois. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to remove Mayor A, B, and P, as in Paul.
A? A, B, and P.
Mayor, I'd like to remove Q for discussion.
Q for discussion. Anything else?
Also, C and D for discussion.
C and D for discussion.
C and D. All right, we're voting on the remainder, which is many, many. E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, R, S, T, U. Roll call, please.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. A, request Board of Trustees' approval of the Zoning and Planning Commission recommendation for a special use permit to allow three residential dwelling units on the second floor of a general commercial C-2 zone district at 5419 West 29, at 29 West 95th Street.
Take them one at a time.
Okay, and B is that ord-
Do that.
Okay, A.
A motion to table.
Motion to table.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. B, ordinance 221338, an ordinance granting a special use permit to allow three second-floor residential dwelling units in a C-2 general commercial zoning district located at 5419 and 5429 West 95th Street. Motion, please.
Motion to table.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. C, request Board of Trustees' approval of the Zoning and Planning Commission's recommendation for a variation of the village code requiring exterior walls of a residential home to be 50% masonry at 4353 West 107th Street. Discussion or motion?
Yes, Mayor. I didn't see anywhere-
Hold.
One minute, Tim.
We need a motion first.
What do you want?
We need a motion before-
Motion before we can discuss it.
Motion approved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Tim?
Yes, Mayor. I just, I didn't see anywhere on the minutes from the planning and P and D as to what type of material they were going to use instead of the masonry.
Jeff, can you address that question?
They intend on using masonry, the variance was-
Microphone. Okay. The subject of their variation was that they're exceeding the 50%. So it's, they, what they intend on using is a, is like, sort of like a high-quality face brick versus like the full masonry walls. That's the nature of the variance.
Yeah, but I mean, if we grant a variance for the, just the 50%, and I'm sure they're not, you know, they're going to put on great material, but technically they could replace, you know, they could put vital siding to it, sheets of plywood. I mean, do we, have they specified, I mean, is it hardy board or LP art site? Do we know what?
Yes, it's, it's, it's got the, it's got the appearance of masonry. It's not, it's not, you know, a siding of any nature. We've got, they did submit detailed drawings to the committee, and that's why they felt that was a high-quality substitution, which is why they've-
Sure, it will be, but do we have anything on records, you know?
I'm sorry, Tim.
Anything on record, what exactly they are going to use?
Yeah, I didn't, I don't have the plans, but yeah, they submitted a full set of plans with, for the review of the committee.
As I'm looking at the minutes of that meeting, it was architectural renderings and drawings. As I recall, the ordinance for masonry construction in the Village of Oaklawn passed in the '50s as a result of fire safety issues, okay? And of course, now, modern materials today have, if I, correct me if I'm right, Chief, modern materials today have constructed fire concerns and are safely materials, correct?
I agree with all of that. All I'm saying is that there is nothing to prevent anybody from putting up vital siding or something of lesser quality. Can we ask the homeowner just to make sure that it's going to be that hardy board or LP or something of quality?
Well, trustee, this was reviewed by our planning and zoning committee with architectural renderings, so they've reviewed it for us and made this recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
So I-
To approve it.
Can't hear Tim.
You can't hear Tim?
I understand that, and I actually spoke to Don at the building department, and it doesn't actually specify the materials.
Well, would you, would you like?[1739.31]
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, can, can we make it, can we make it, approve it subject to, uh, a quality replacement?
This is new construction.
It's new construction, uh, with, um, modern materials. Uh, I suppose we can, if you want, Tim, we could table this with a motion to table.
Oh, I don't want to hold him up. I mean, I don't want to hold him up. But it, it, you know, the, the plan, uh, the, um, from the time told me that, you know, it looks great, but there's just nothing there on record to specify the type of material.
Jeff has a comment, Tim.
Yeah, I, I believe what, what, you know, in light, in light of the, uh, the, the design and, you know, the, the acceptable nature of this, of this, uh, construction, which does, you know, does, uh, present a variance to the building code, I, I, I kind of, I think I, what Tim's getting at is that, uh, we should really consider the, this type of construction as an acceptable construction and, and allow for the frame, the frame, uh, structure with the face brick, I think is kind of what we should be looking at. So to, going forward, in order to, you know, in order to allow a high-quality, um, uh, single-family residence construction of this sort could be looked at as, as, you know, as, uh, you know, a possible change for that, for that part of the building code. So that's something that we should consider in, in light of this example.
Well, that's, that's, that's another issue altogether. That's separate from what we have here on the table.
True, no, I'm saying, I think.
Moving this. Clear construction.
Right.
Then would you, um, would you be happy, allowing this and ask, would you be happy to allow this and give instruction to our building department, Don McKenna, to, uh, keep it?
A hundred, yes, a hundred percent. I just, you know, as long as they know that, that we would like them to do, uh, to use quality material. I mean, I'm, it's, by all accounts, it's a beautiful house. I'm sure they're planning and doing it anyway. But I, I think, like Jeff said, it's something we need, need to look at in the future.
Okay. Uh, trustee Sack, this is in your district. You had any, any input on this?
No, no, but I, I'm not concerned about it. The petitioner even said that she was aware of the ordinance, and if it was a big deal, they're still willing to add more stones to the side of the elevation.
Uh-huh.
So th- this is going to be a beautiful house. They're not cutting corners. It's, it's just with building costs what they are, I, I understand what she's trying to do. They want to make, the house is going to look amazing, but, um, I think we can approve it and let Tim talk to building, just to make sure that it's, it's quality material being used. I'm fine with that.
Did you hear that, Tim?
I did, yeah, yeah.
Okay, you know what? We'll keep an eye on it. She is willing to make modifications, add stone.
Yeah.
Or whatever the village wants. So we'll have Don McKenna, our building department, keep a close eye on what goes on there.
That's, yeah.
And educate us, since this is one of the first that, uh, come forward to this board, uh, to ask for this. Are you happy with that?
Yeah, no, that's fine. It's, uh, you know, just as long as they're aware that we're expecting him, you know, to, um, to use that, that they're not going to use vinyl siding or something.
Correct. Okay, well then, off for the roll call, men.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Olin Echak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. D is ordinance twenty-two thirteen thirty-nine, an ordinance granting an exterior wall variation for a new single-family resident at forty-three fifty-three West one hundred and seventh Street.
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Olin Echak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to P. P is ordinance twenty-two thirteen dash forty-six, an ordinance granting amnesty of business license fees for the year two thousand and twenty-two in the Village of Oklaun, County of Cook, Illinois.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Um, yes, I think this, I, I think this is what we discussed at the last meeting. Our village manager and finance have looked at this. Um, we, we thought about bringing, uh, the Chamber of Commerce into this and looking at ways to, um, bring them to join the chamber. Um, council looked at that and said that was really not something that we could do, so, um, I feel real happy with what we did, helping out the businesses of Oklaun. Uh, trustee Sack and myself have, have, have looked at this extensively, and I think, uh, I think this is a good move for our, for our town, for our businesses, uh, to get, uh, to get them back at running.
Any other discussion?
We did, uh, modify this slightly to, uh, signify that you had to have your business in Oklaun. So only the, if your business resides in Oklaun, do you qualify for this. So, you know, if you're licensed here, but your business is somewhere else, it wouldn't work. So it's got to be, it's only for businesses in the Village of Oklaun.
Physically.
Physically, physically in the Village of Oklaun.
And, and there was some discussion at our last meeting about the cost of this program. I think trustee Stalker asked for a report on that. Uh, did you get your report? No, well, uh, village manager did send something out. I was aware of it on a, we, uh, lower than what we originally thought, correct?
Yes.
We did provide it to trustee Sack and Mallow. I just presume they provided it to the board.
I, I sent out an email to all the trustees and the mayor this past week with details.
My apologies, I've been up. Okay, well, actually, I think what we did is we threw the figure of six hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Costs. We, I think actually when we got down to the nickels and dimes, it's how much for under?
So, so to be clear, and trustee Sack said it, uh, correctly, this applies to businesses in Oklaun, so established businesses here, businesses outside of Oklaun that have a physical footprint here. So somebody may live or be headquartered elsewhere, but has a fast food operation here, or anybody home-based business who rep, registers with the Secretary of State as Oklaun, and many do, do that. So there may be a contract that they do business elsewhere, but they call Oklaun their headquarters. It applies to all of them. It does not apply to businesses based in Mundaline that might need license to come in here and haul waste away or landscape. Uh, and that revised number projected, again, we don't know because we don't know how many businesses are going to remain open, close, apply, it, it changes yearly, uh, projected to be between four fifty and five hundred and fifty thousand. Original projection was six hundred thousand. So it's significant amount of money, and, and I would agree with the board. I, I think it's a good move, given what, uh, our business community has faced coming out of COVID and now likely going into a potential recession, or certainly a slowdown in the economy, uh, the supply chain issues, the, the labor problems that was pointed out by trustees Sack and Mallow. Um, I, I think fundamentally, and I, and I've received significant positive feedback, I'm sure the board has as well, not only from the business community, but others who say, you know, as, as long as the village can afford it. And again, our retail numbers have been strong. Uh, thankfully, we did raise the home rule tax last year. Uh, so again, this is sort of an offset there, and it's going to provide the average business in Oklaun, the average over the course of seven, eight hundred businesses that would qualify about a six hundred dollar, uh, credit. Some as low as seventy-five, some as high as five, six thousand dollars. Uh, but on average, somewhere in the area of six hundred dollars.
And again, this is for one year only, for one year amnesty.
Any other discussion? I might point out, this stems from an original concept presented to the Chamber of Commerce, one of the strongest chambers here on the southwest side with over two hundred and fifty members, to encourage more participation, uh, with our businesses in our chamber. The more we can work together to make the business community strong in Oklaun, the better we all, as residents, share in the cost of running government. Um, and business and their sales tax revenues is an extremely important part of the annual budget. So I would like to encourage the businesses to take advantage of this, to consider looking into a membership in our Chamber of Commerce, so that we can work even harder.
Terry, just to be clear, I do not object to this, and I will vote for it.
Thank you. All right, we'll call for a vote. We got a motion, we'll call for a vote.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Olin Echak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. And Q, resolution twenty-two thirteen dash thirty-eight, a resolution waiving the competitive bidding requirements and award the service agreement with Flock Group for forty-two license plate readers for the Oklaun Police Department. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Um, I, I just want to open it up to our police chief. This has been an idea of, of our staff, police department, uh, that will continue to aid our police in being able to get reliable information, help them continue to make a statement that if coming into the Village of Oklaun and you want to do something illegal or wrong, uh, that we will use everything we can to make sure that we are able to hold you accountable for your, the police, you want to explain what you're doing?
Thank you, trustee. Um, actually, this, I'd been looking at this for over a year now, and then earlier this year, I don't know if the village manager remembers, but, uh, we were having a conversation with a resident, also a police officer, and he brought up license plate readers, and I don't think the village manager had ever heard about those before, and he goes, hey, I want those. So, um, we, we worked on it, and I really can't take credit for it. Uh, Commander Kern of our detective division, he put together a committee and did a very detailed port, uh, report that all the board members got. Um, and we've, uh, negotiated a deal with Flock, and what actually license plate readers do is what exactly trustee Olin Echak said, it'll make our jobs easier, our detectives' jobs easier. So it reads the license plates as they are entering Oklaun or they're exiting Oklaun. Um, if, and if the vehicle is listed on the hot sheet, whether it's stolen, uh, someone who's endangered, Amber Alert, it will notify us, it will notify dispatch, and then we can get cars sent to that area and start looking for that vehicle. What it'll also do is aid our detectives in investigating, uh, crimes. So if we have a crime that occurs at a certain bit, business at a time of day, our detectives can go into the database, they can look at what vehicles were leaving and entering the area at that time, and they'll be able to, uh, start tracking down some registrations and hopefully locate the offender. I also have our representatives from Flock here are able to do a brief overview and answer any questions that the board may have.
Ask me to plug it in real quick. You're going to bring. Plug it in.
Are we going to do a?
Oh, uh.
Powerpoint?
Um, I, I don't have to, if, uh.
Well, I'd have to, have the, uh, yeah, there it is. Bring it come down?
Here it comes.
Oh, it's coming down, okay. Want to kill a couple of the lights back there?
Um, well, first of all, I really appreciate you guys taking some time out of your day, sit down and, uh, uh, learn a little bit more about, about Flock. So, um, uh, this is, uh, after working with your police department, um, this is basically the, the coverage that your team is looking to cover in, in Oklaun. Um, Flock Safety is the largest LPR vendor in Illinois. Uh, we are, uh, a hundred and thirty-three villages or cities in Illinois, uh, currently trust, uh, Flock Safety, help them identify stolen vehicles and other ones, warrants coming out of town, and help solve crimes after the fact. Uh, we currently have, out of those a hundred and thirty-three, forty-four of them are located in Cook County. Um, so there's already a, a pretty wide network of these block cameras. And what's nice about that for an organization like yours is there's free sharing between departments, uh, which your department is already taking advantage of. Um, uh, Flock, uh, here's a, here's the, the map of, of our, uh, of the, of what's already here, uh, in, in, in your guys' area. Uh, so lots of, uh, South Chicago suburbs here, out through Will County and up down the I fifty-five corridor, are already utilizing Flock and tracking the, these groups that are coming through with stolen vehicles, either committing crimes or steal additional cars. Um, now, uh, what, um, basically the way this technology works is one, one of two ways. One is, so a crime has happened, we're going to go try and solve it. So, um, these are a couple demo cameras that I have up, uh, down on Cicero Avenue, and so let's say, uh, something happened in the last couple hours on, I'm going to pull every vehicle that went up and down, uh, the street during that time period. Um, it's about twenty-one hundred vehicles, uh, between fi- between five and seven, seven thirty here. You can scroll down and, uh, and your law enforcement agency can review these vehicles. Uh, we are able to capture not just the license plate, but also the make, color, and type of vehicle as well, as well as indicate a different characters, like this one's got a window sticker, so window stickers, bumper stickers, roofrest, stuff like that. So what's important about that is that, um, a witness says, I saw a white Honda. Your law enforcement team's going to be able to go back to the cameras and pull all the white Hondas that were in the area of that crime at that time period. So, um, uh, what type of vehicles, uh, one of you guys want me to find?
Toyota Sequoia.
Okay, so you come in here, uh, you're going to grab all the, uh, grab all the Toyota, oop, maybe go all the way down to T. Lot, lot of different carmakers out there. Grab all the Toyotas, uh, what type of, is that a, is that an SUV?
Yeah.
Or a Sequoia? Um, grab all the SUVs.
Lot of dense.
Yep. Um, so in a matter of seconds, we're going to go from that, all those eleven hundred vehicles, down to the twenty Toyota SUVs, picking up that one back there, that were in the area of the time period. So you can click, as you click in, um, click in and, and, uh, and, and view, view the different ones here. Um, and now this one's only picked up one time, uh, on my, on my camera, uh, my two cameras here, but, uh, this one's picked up twenty times in the last thirty days. They'll give you, give them, your department a heat map of how this vehicle's moved. There's a lot of times with, uh, these criminals, they aren't, they aren't necessarily native to, they aren't in Oklaun very often. So if you see, if you're looking for a couple of different Toyotas, uh, one's up and down Ninety-Fifth every day, that's probably going to work. Someone who comes in one time, that's probably something that you want to be looking at a little stronger. So that's how these guys work for crime happened, investigators go and try and solve it. The other side of it is the real-time alerts. So we are directly integrated, uh, with NCIC, which is the FBI's database of stolen vehicles, warrants, uh, things like that. Amber Alert, um, endangered and missing people, your team can create their own custom hot lists, and we have the partnership with the Illinois State Police where we get the leads list every morning at eight AM, which, and that is the state list of stolen vehicles, warrants, things like that. Um, so every vehicle that's passing these is running against all those different, um, all those different lists. If any of them hit, the latency is between seven to fifteen seconds, we'll send out a real-time alert, either as a text message, an email, we can send to dispatch, or put it right in the squad car. So you can have Officer Martinez sitting in a squad car writing a report, and, uh, this is from a custom hot list, but let's pretend it's a stolen vehicle, passes, passed through the, through the reader, and near real time, right in his squad car, who get a little bubble that says, stole, uh, stolen vehicle, white Ford truck. He clicks it, he gets a picture of the plate, picture of the vehicle, location, direction of travel, and why it pinged off the hot list. So in near real time, though, your team will be able to respond, either try and drive that stolen vehicle out of town, or make a stop. Now, because of the network effect of all the other departments in your area also utilizing this, and it being integrated with Cook County Dispatch, as, if a stolen vehicle comes out of Chicago, goes through, uh, Evergreen Park is also looking at these as well, it's, hits on Evergreen Park, hits on you guys, uh, heads up, goes through Justice, then hits Berwin, they can track this ve- this vehicle as it moves through the area, and it becomes more likely that they're going to be able to make a stop on it and coordinate with the different departments on, on closing in on it. Um, does anyone have any question about any of that?
How quickly can we get these installed?
So, um, yours will be installed in, uh, in three phases. Uh, first one is anything that, uh, is going on city property, uh, can be installed in about three to five weeks from a signed contract. Um, iDOT cameras, uh, will need an iDOT permit, they take a little bit longer, uh, those take three to six months to get, uh, to go through iDOT approval. Um, we will submit those permits right up, right upon install. Um, and then just, uh, about two weeks ago, Cook County has, uh, revised their policy on Cook County roadways. They have now decided to develop a policy, a, a new policy on, uh, LPR, uh, installation. They, they said they will release this in, in a quick order, but they're, uh, we have to wait on their new policy, uh, to, to install in Cook County road.
What can we do to help you get through the red tape, to get these up quicker?
Uh, we will, we encourage any, any help with iDOT or with, um, or with Cook County. Um, I believe there are forty-three jurisdictions currently waiting on iDOT permits as we speak right now.
Yeah, because I, I like that when you read the police reports, the vast majority of things that happened in Oklaun that are, are, uh, less than desirable, uh, typically involve vehicles that are stolen and, um, people coming into the Village of Oklaun. So I, I commend our police, uh, in, in staff, in, in our police department, that they're looking to be proactive, looking to prevent crimes before they happen, and I think is a great statement to say that if you're a criminal and you want to come into the Village
statement to say that if you're a criminal and you want to come into the village of Oaklawn, we will find you. So thank you.
One thing to address your concern, too, is that he's we've already formulated our plan with Flock, and any cameras where we put them, if we can get them on village property and it's still in the area where we want coverage, those will go up first.
Yeah.
So we will start developing the network right away.
And we have worked with Lieutenant Kern to try and find private businesses, like maybe gas stations that have light poles that might be on IDOT roadways, but are close enough that we can hang a camera on and it functioned just fine. So we're we're trying to, even as we still speak, trying to get more of them off the IDOT or county right of way to to be able to move those quicker. I believe you have fourteen locations right now, out of the forty-two, that will need IDOT permits.
Chief, can you explain how we're going to pay for this and what it costs as far as not only installation, but the annual fee?
Yes, the in your trustee packets, what's what's in there?
For the public, I want.
It's I I don't remember the exact number. I want to say it was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Out of that hundred and twenty-nine thousand, I believe, that covers the the contract for a year. The first year is a little higher because the IDOT permits we have to get are an additional seven hundred and fifty bucks. So next year, when we renew, you would take the seven hundred and fifty off of the fifteen or fourteen IDOT cameras, because we've already applied for the permit and paid for it. We will be using equitable sharing funds. So this is, for layman's terms, drug money that was seized from a drug dealer. So this will be no cost to the taxpayer, so you can still, won't affect any any of the budget.
Well, that's great news. Thanks. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, make a comment. I know there've been a couple of people in discussion about this type of technology. It feels Big Brother-ish, right? And, you know, what kind of world are we in now, the Orwellian world? And I would argue, unfortunately, we're in a world where criminals are allowed to run free, they're released almost instantaneously. We just had this Chicago police officer off duty got shot and got charged with, the three got charged with aggravated battery, not attempted murder. It's it's beyond maddening, and it's it's, as we've talked many times over the past year, anything we can do to demonstrate, not only we're going to, as trustee Oliniechak said, try to prevent the crime, but if you commit a crime, you know, our chief knows that this board says expend no, don't worry about expense, you know, especially violent crime. And I think, you know, this is one of those things, and and again, to those who might think this technology can be abused, right? I mean, clearly, it will only be used if there is a a bad guy, for lack of a better term, and 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 not, you know, to surveil the rest of us.
Yeah, this this will only be used for investigative purposes. There'll be no fines or tickets associated with it. This will strictly be used to investigate crimes.
One other on on the Big Brother front, every capture that is made on this is stored on CEGI certified Amazon web servers for thirty days. After thirty days, if no one in law enforcement has deemed a capture part of an active investigation, it's purged, and it's gone, gone. So this is not a forever database, that like just because you passed a camera on Ninety-Fifth six months ago, you're still sitting in it. If you're if it is not part of an active investigation after thirty days, it's gone. Also, you guys are not actually buying this camera from Flock. You are buying the data coming out of the camera. So the village of Oaklawn owns all this data, not Flock. We are not repackaging this in any way and like selling to insurance companies or anything like that. You guys own the data, not Flock.
We own the cameras?
No, no.
So we don't service maintain?
No.
You guys do all that?
And then, of course, every two or three years, when new technology comes out, that's included in our contract.
So if this camera, like, if there's a snowstorm and this camera gets busted, we roll tech, we attempt to fix it, but if the camera's busted, we hang a brand-new camera, no cost to the village.
Okay.
Again, you're not you're but you're not buying cameras, you're buying the data, and we're responsible for having forty-two working cameras.
And all I'm going to say to the use of technology, there's not a neighborhood in Oaklawn that doesn't have Ring cameras or some type of cameras on the outside of their house, and I'm going to tell you that it's a great use of resources to make a statement to those who want to act less than desirable in our village. And I know that in my neighborhood, there have been residents that have helped the police solve issues that have gone on, and and I I think the use of technology to protect our neighborhoods is a very good use.
And I believe the Highland Park shooter, wasn't there some plate-reading technology that was utilized, and they find they find him in the middle of a roadway or something?
Yeah. The, yeah, the his vehicle was was caught captured on a block camera after the shooting, but before they knew who they were looking for. Like, those photos that went out were all from block cameras, like with his vehicle and stuff.
Amazing.
Yeah, that question of privacy and security, that bus left a long time ago, you're on a camera all the time, okay? Just keep that in mind. I think that's why hoodies are so popular and masks. Okay. All right, any other questions?
I just have one other thing is, what does Flock stand?
It's not an acronym.
Weapons and tactics.
Yeah.
Special weapons and tactics.
Flock.
Oh, I don't know.
It's.
It's not.
It's not.
Christmas tree.
Yeah, it's like, they're a bunch of like a bunch of birds all working together, flock. The LPR is actually called the Falcon Camera. We have a couple other products that are all bird-related. But, yeah, no acronym on that.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll do a roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes, and that completes our consent agenda. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. It's a it's very heartening to know that technology is there to provide a little more safety for our community. All right, we'll move on to twelve, the village clerk's report.
For item A, we have approval of the semi-monthly disbursement resolution number twenty-two-two dash twelve D dated June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, in the amount of one million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars and forty-six cents.
Motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.